Okay, are we all set? Okay, so Bill, do I lead this one, or is this something that you lead? Do you know how this one works?
It's up to you. You're the chairperson. You can delegate me to do that, and I certainly will. I'm happy to do so.
Okay, I think I'll help where I can, but I think you have a really good view of where the technology is at in the current state. And I'd like to kind of hear you out on these different agenda items. From the email, I think these items are a great start. I think it'll lay out a good plan for this year. And I'm hoping to kind of have a discussion with Councilman Lavaca and Burns along with you to make sure that we're supporting you and that we can kind of bring some of these things to the council if needed.
Awesome, great. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started then. The meeting's called to order at 5:32 PM on Wednesday, the 17th of February. Looks like in attendance, we've got Brendan McGoffin, Chair, Joe Burns. It sounds like Joe's got some, another guest.
Oh, sorry.
And Councilman Nick Lavaca. And I think we may have just a guest from the public list. So on to the approval of the agenda. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
A motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
All in favor? Let's see. Approval of minutes, there aren't any minutes since this is our very first meeting, so we can skip on to the next item. That would be the IT Director Succession Plan. And as for policy, let me just get my notes out here. As for policy, we really don't have anything existing. Policy-wise for that. I know that the city administrator Charlie and Nikki are city attorney are working on a kind of a global policy document that will probably, will likely be addressed in that for all departments. So stay tuned for that. But as for the components of that, that plan, I'm kind of looking at identifying a key position or succession, which is really easy in the IT department, since we're a department of two. I really kind of had that in mind when, when we went through the selection process for Woody. And I think with some additional training, he's going to make an outstanding candidate for that. And part of that would be identifying the job requirements and so that we can give them the adequate training and building those competencies and then assessing progress down the line. I'm, just so you all know, I'm probably about less than three and a half, three and a half years until I retire. So I, I, I think this is a great opportunity for me to put the policy in place and the plan and kind of help with that transition to the next, the next leader of the department.
Okay, how much time do you think would be a good recommendation to transfer between successions?
You mean the time between updating the plan or the time in transitioning the actual person in position?
Oh, I think transitioning the person.
I, I think a six-month period is, is a good plan.
Okay.
We kind of done that in the past for other outfits that I've worked at. It sure makes things a lot easier if you can just start letting go of things a little earlier and seeing where there might be some holes in the back that need to patch and modify the panel a little bit and.
Okay.
Bill, does the city have a backup plan or, you know, contractor that we utilize? If for some reason like you're out ill or you, or Woody, or anything like that, is, is there any kind of, you know, plan for any of that?
We used to have a inter-local agreement with another city. And that just really didn't work out well. I think that the best we could have is to eventually have an additional staff member. Honestly, there's more than enough work for, for two people. And I think that at some point, that's the direction that we need to head. That would be my own recommendation. Contract work, yeah, that, that, that's a possibility, although it's hard to bring someone in who isn't there on a day-to-day basis and is familiar with our network and our, you know, our culture. Things, just simple things like that, it can be, be kind of difficult. I don't know. Brendan, have you guys used a lot of contractors other than people who are actually working in the trenches in your outfit?
We use mostly dedicated full-time employees. We will occasionally bring in contractors for specific technologies. Yep, like for big software implementations or like security assessments, we do contract some of that stuff out. But for the most part, we have everybody on staff.
I think there's more people too, so it's less likely that you would lose 50% of your staff if one person had a broken leg snowboarding or something, right?
Yeah, that's true. Bill, other question I had with this, do we have any sort of like Wiki or ticketing system that as part of the succession, someone could look in the Wiki for things that have been documented? If they're new to the position that they can pick it up and ask a question in the Wiki?
We, we actually started tracking all of our tickets within Outlook. And have, you know, searchable folder there for that. It's the best setup. We looked at some different help desk suites and hardware management suites that were kind of, kind of combined. Didn't really find a good fit. And because there are only two of us, some, some of them, the work involved in just managing them didn't, didn't make sense. So to be doing okay with, with the tickets on the help desk, we started shortly after after Woody came on board. It was much easier to, for us to share information on each of the tickets.
And as far as Wiki goes, do we have any like place for documentation that somebody in the future could pick it up and, and look into like how systems are set up?
Right now, we've just got a folder on our file server that basically passed out a procedure.
Okay.
Do you guys do, I don't even know if it'd be necessary with just the two of you, but screen-o-matic or some sort of screen recording for, you know, tasks that might come up that are a little bit more involved or more difficult?
We do some videos, but mostly, mostly screenshots. And I don't want to get too deep into the, the weeds of how we're actually accomplishing our jobs. Just, just to kind of a warning, we want to try to focus on the actual policy. And that's, that's something that we do. We do lots, lots of screenshots and documentation that way. Have a lot more coaching than we do formal training and training. Do more of that.
So do you feel like we have a good set of components for the succession plan? Do you need more input, or input from us as far as things that we'd like to see?
I think that would be helpful. I mean, the, the, try to, yes, try to frame it in, 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 in the coming from the policy perspective though. And I know it's, it's, it's hard to do that, but yeah, I think, I think it, it would be more to have the leeway to, to come up with solutions to fit that, those policies, rather to be directed by council as to the actual components for maybe included in the plan. Does that make sense?
To clarify, are you saying that you would like to, us to stipulate, you need to make a six-month checklist essentially rolling over the tasks in order for how you're going to do it? But we're not going to stipulate to you how that is ordered. You will decide the order.
That's a great way to put it.
When you were talking about it, that was my assumption of what you were expecting is that, you know, you're going to slowly hand over the tasks you do each day until on your final two weeks, you're going, well, I'm going to spin in my chair for a while. You let me know how it goes.
So do you have, I mean, I'm sure you do, but a list of all those components already made out that would be included with that policy? And to my understanding, we, we don't have a policy right now, correct? For the succession, did you, you didn't have one when you came on, or did you?
No, no, it was all pretty much, I just spent, I spent about six months with, with the person who had the job before. And kind of learned the ropes that way. A lot of it was documented, but there's a lot that wasn't. So I think we can do a little better job.
I think that sometimes where that documentation, the process and the policy kind of sometimes, you know, combined because if somebody steps in for whatever reason, let's say Woody gets in and three months later, he's not able to, but he just did the six-month training. Is there something that somebody can step in there and see what all those components are and how to do the components with, or referencing for him even? So, yeah. Yeah, I know. That sounds like a definitely good, good motion forward.
So there, there really isn't a policy right now to have one, to have a plan. But I guess what I would like to do is kind of check in with, with Charlie and with Nikki and see if they are firstly, if they're going to be including that as an overall part of the policy for all departments, which I kind of think they, I haven't seen the document yet. I know that, that Charlie is very policy-driven, so I think we're going to see a lot more better documentation of policy as well. If, if he does have that in there, then I will kind of frame my, my succession plan based on that policy.
Okay.
Any other questions about succession plan?
I think we're good.
The next one is the five-year technology strategic plan. And again, there's currently no policy for that. We do need one, and this would be a great opportunity to kind of provide feedback on like how often you want that policy updated, what if any major components you want within that policy. And then the, the actual plan, what I would propose is we've got a, a technology advisory group already in place that includes a lot of folks from different departments that are pretty technologically savvy. And that group might be a really good place to start on creating that five-year plan.
So Bill, do you think this is something that we could help structure and send to the advisory group and get feedback and have it come back to this committee? And we can work kind of in tandem together to develop that five-year plan and then what would your recommendation be for how often we should review once we've completed the plan?
The tag group meets quarterly, so I would think that it would make sense to, for us to meet after that meeting.
Okay.
I can put the structure together and include that in the, our next meeting, I think, is March 17th. And I'll talk about that more a little bit later in the agenda. I've really found it to be helpful. I mean, I've worked at places in the past that are kind of the work technology is driven by a IT department. The, the needs of the, the other departments. And you do need to find a balance there. Otherwise, you can end up with really great technology implemented, but nobody uses it or it's too cumbersome or it doesn't evolve their needs.
Are they using all the same technology right now? Are we using 365 per se and everybody's communicating on Teams? Or are we using like NetSweep or Salesforce and 365 or, you know what I mean? Is it a network?
Everyone is brand new on, on Microsoft 365 and Teams, so it's, it's, we just transitioned to new, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. Item number seven.
But if that would be part of the strategic plan as far as like the components and current policy, is that like, here's the type of software that we project us utilizing and mainly using over the next five years? And it does seem like, you know, technology, especially IT, is an integral part of business and the running of the city, more so now than ever. Because it's especially like digital signatures, communication through Teams, communication through meetings, Zoom, we use right now, but we could be doing it on Teams. But all that, all that ability right now is critical to the, the doing of our jobs. And yeah, it does, it does make sense for all the divisions to be able to, to utilize. I think like 10 years ago, 20 years ago, maybe technology or IT was more about like, here, help me with software, help me with email. Where now it's like, it's the, the foundation of what causes.
It's communication. It's yeah, the, it's funny, you mentioned the, the, the e-doc, the e-signatures. We just implemented that DocuSign and signed my first test document today that Debbie sent out. And so I think that's going to work really well.
That's great to hear.
So let's see, I had a couple more notes on that, on the five-year. Yeah, I think what, what I wanted to just kind of point out was some of the guidance that, that I'll be using is very similar to what I found on this Musk Adams blog and another blog, the, from the Resolute Technology, I included both of those in the email that I sent to you. I'm going to be posting these as late materials. Basically, even following some of these guidelines, I think is going to be, is going to help create a plan that is a little more, a little less government and a little more focused on an organization that can be a little more minimal. But the, the first step is this steering committee, that's, you know, we've got that, that technology advisory group built in there, so I think that's going to work. And as far as the policy goes, there isn't, since there isn't one, I'd like to propose starting to create that and, and have you got to review that policy? I would probably use a similar framework to, let's see. I have to move this, let I see it. This is the problem with, with Zoom and having a small screen. Let's see. Basically a template similar to this one that I, this is our current security awareness training and testing policy. And so I would use a similar form as this and present that to you guys at the next meeting for review. I could even email this, the policy along the way and we can probably review for next meetings. And come up with something that's solid.
Okay.
A good approach.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good start to just get a draft going, something that we could communicate on and, and give feedback on. I think something that might be really helpful as part of the policy too is to help define, you know, over the five-year period, what types of resources we can help go to the council and get the funding for, you know, if we're looking at a five-year stretch, that gives us a good plan of, okay, this, these are the years we can look at investing in this versus, you know, that's coming in the next couple of years. I think I have a policy that can help define and prioritize for the growth of the city would be really helpful.
If the, the, so the policy would be basically a requirement that the, the plan include a budget components, a maybe a FTE component. Resources like that, that makes sense.
Would we be able to see a hierarchy or a tree of like, okay, here's IT in the divisions that, that will support because you got waste management? We have finance, we have planning, and does any of those communicate with each other under that idea? So that would be too cool to make sure that we don't like, one, one department, maybe finance wants to use an entirely separate software that isn't compatible. And we can say, okay, within that policy, we have to know that the softwares can communicate across the borders.
So yeah.
So, Bill, do you see any large expenses coming up in the next five years? Are you needing new servers? I don't know if you have them in-house or if you serve a data bank. Not sure what else is.
We, we do have some, and, and actually we include that in our, in our annual and biennial, biannual budget to cover those. The hardware that we use is not expensive because we don't do a lot. We try to use software as a service when, when it makes sense. And you'll notice we've got our, our cemetery management system that's coming online hopefully by the end of this month. To do the training, you know, we've got iWorks, we've got our, our email is hosted by Microsoft. All of those things make it so that it's a lot more manageable for us to, much advice to manage a subscription basis like that. And it is to plan on replacing a new exchange server every five years or, you know, whenever. I hope that makes sense to you guys as council members too.
Yeah. Definitely. What about training and time off for that train? Is that absorbed within that specific vision or that department? So planning is, is, you know, in the five-year plan, going to utilize this software or they're bringing in people to utilize that software? Is that something that they budget for as far as training or adoption? Okay, so that's not even related to, nice.
Any other questions or comments about the five-year technology strategic plan, policy or itself?
I, I shout out those suggestions. I don't know if it would fall under the strategic plan, and I know that it kind of got pulled from the agenda and more like just out to the general department to say, what do you guys think about this? But would that be something that would fall under the strategic plan or somewhere else as far as having an interactive website that allows? I think drawing the community in to, to play around on the website by clicking and touching and moving it, expanding in our touchscreen environment might be fun for them. I don't know.
I did. That was a great suggestion and I bid for that as a, as a suggestion. Not a directive, but to, to the appropriate departments. And the feedback I got was really positive, so I think, you know, folks want to do that. You'll probably see that happening here in the next month or so.
That's awesome.
As far as including that in a, in, in our scope as, as the, as the technology committee, you would say, my understanding of the approach that, that Charlie and I discussed was the policy would be to, you know, create technologies that are, that encourage citizen involvement or engagement, you know? It's more broad, generalized, and then we can come up with ways to do that.
So that makes, yeah, because this is more generating a policy of the breakdown, the, the sections and subsections for a document that's on file for the public to see, read, be exposed to, not so much building of that enterprise or that technology. That, that makes a lot more.
And those, those policies will all be driven on, on what your goals and, and mission are as a, as a council. So the policy and what your goals. Anything else on that one?
I think I'm good.
Let's move on to security assessments then. And currently, we, we have every three years a Uh security audit from our criminal justice information system. But we don't actually have a a policy in place. Um that that governs uh security assessments. We don't actually. Have any uh, let's see, is it down here? I'm gonna pull up my notes. Yeah, we don't really have anything that includes a third party um vulnerabilities scan. I think we really need to. To have that. We looked at a a couple of different options in the past. Right after, right after I hired um, I think it was right after I hired Lynn. And the unfortunately, it seemed like the. The companies that were doing the audience, the audits were were more interested in selling us the. So I'd like to maybe explore. You know, some some other alternatives to that, maybe a a school or a um, you know, someone who doesn't have. Uh any incentive to. Uh skew the the data in such a way that uh, well, gosh, that's a perfect fit for the product we're still.
Makes sense.
You you probably get that a lot.
Oh, yeah. Um so, Bill, this idea kind of came up when I was going through the financial audit. Um on the finance committee and they, there was a brief mention of cybersecurity and I looked into the Washington State Auditor's Office. And they have a, there was a a bill that was passed that allows. The state auditor to do cybersecurity audits for local governments at zero cost. Is that something that we've ever looked at doing for CJ Woolley?
No, no. In fact, I wasn't aware of that. Um knew that they were expanding uh some of their uh. More procedural uh component as opposed to the financial. But that would, that that might make sense because they really don't have anything to sell us, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think as far as a policy goes, um. I know for like other governmental agencies, one every year is the typical requirement. So I think for as policy goes, if it's not every year, maybe every other year that we have a policy to do. Either with the state auditor or with another, you know, third party contractor um. And it's, I mean, the state auditor is a free service, so it's not something that we have to go and get money for to to do. Um and I think it would really help us with our security posture um. The other um option and uh we use this a little bit. And I don't want to get too much into the weeds on how to do the job, but I know that some services that have been really successful for us that. Uh do continuous monitoring um. That if we want to do something like that on the side that does cost a little money, I think that could be written into the policy as well that. We have a certain amount that's, you know, passive scanning that's a continuous that kicks reports out to us. So when a new vulnerability does come out, we're notified on a shorter timeframe. But then every year or two, we get a dedicated team to come in from either the state auditor or somewhere to. Just assess to make sure that, you know, where we got all the protections. Do you think that's?
Those are good, uh good things to consider. Um so um I'd like to uh go ahead and start uh putting together a policy for that as well. And uh work with you to um to get that, you know, in a acceptable format or. Subcommittee here and then um bring that to uh to the full council.
Okay, yeah, I would think kind of like we were talking about technology nowadays being the main. Foundation to all of our infrastructure version twenty years ago, wasn't it? Uh it's also our most vulnerable for security purposes and it's the easiest way for an outside person to come right in. Without even being in the state or country. Yeah, just like you were saying on that, so.
We've seen it happen, you know, with our neighbors uh in Burlington and and elsewhere, so it's it's uh. It's not like we're just because we're um a few miles off. Or that we're out of sight, out of mind. Anything else on the uh security assessment policy?
If we do the audits and we have the um, you know, passive inspecting or whatnot. Are we uh is in the policy, is there a certain level of criteria that we should have as our security network system to? To protect against or is there something that should be in the policy that says you have to have a minimum of this in order for protection of it? Is that? I don't even know if that would be something that we would need.
That's probably more in the plan than the policy.
Okay. Then I don't have anything else.
I don't think so. Uh I didn't want you guys to have to listen to the kids show that my son's listening to. Um, most of my questions are probably more into the weeds than necessary. I mean, um. With that uh. Security audits, like when was the last security audit done? What's your current timeframe that you do this?
Well, the the last uh C G S uh audit we had was. Two weeks ago, so I think we have another one coming up in uh either late. Twenty twenty-two or or uh early twenty twenty-three.
And I, and. You have, I I might have missed this earlier. You do have some way of telling whenever a vulnerability comes up with one of the software components that you're using, right?
We do monitor um the firewall and and server logs, but um. You know, it's moving target. So I think it would really help to have that uh third party um vulnerability test as well.
I I guess what I I'm asking um is. Is there any kind of a service, kind of like the vulnerability test where they actually just keep you up to date on things that you might want to change? Uh like, hey, you know, cities are starting to get hacked through this back door that was not previously uh an option to hackers. So now, if you change this and this, you'll cover yourself. Is that something that exists?
We we uh subscribe to a lot of services for that, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, that that's it for me then. Thank you.
Anything else on uh item six? So uh, let's see, six. And seven is the Microsoft uh enterprise agreement and um. In here a little bit, so. This is what, uh let's see, that's. So these are the licenses for for um Microsoft three sixty-five. And um kind of where we're headed is is a hybrid system. Uh where right now are, we've got two separate domains and I don't want to get too tactical. Um but but it's not perfect. Um I'd like to move towards a hybrid system. So that we can synchronize those and don't have two separate lists of of accounts for everybody to maintain. But the good thing about having them separate is um there have been, and I don't know if you've been kind of following the news. Uh mostly in late uh late last year with uh um Microsoft uh. Exchange accounts getting hacked. And for for different organizations and um. One nice thing about having them separate is if your email gets hacked, your your uh your land domain doesn't. So um you may may be able to send emails as you, but it. But it makes it a lot harder to manage and so um uh eventually I'd like to get those. On a hybrid system so that we can handle them together. Um you were talking about having everyone on uh on Microsoft Teams. But we've got most everybody on this uh Microsoft uh three sixty-five. And here, got about, I think. Basically minimal bit eighty-seven, eighty-two out of eighty-seven licenses. We pay for those licenses annually. Through our enterprise agreement, used to this uh um exchange online plan. And this video plan are both outside of that. These are just ones that we can throw like volunteer firefighters uh who just need email and that's it. Uh we'll throw them on there and that's why you only see about nineteen. And uh Vizio same thing. Of users that that really uh want to use Vizio, that's the sad one. As far as the actual E A goes. This is what we're looking at with that. So you see the. Color amounts look big because they're looking at the whole three year. And here, so about about twenty-six grand a year for our. Uh licensing through Microsoft. That includes office, that includes our. A client uh access licenses for Windows uh server, that includes the server licenses. Um of course, um the Microsoft three sixty-five.
Bill, are you handling, I know it's outside of the scope, but are or is I T handling any of the software for the engineers? Are we using SolidWorks or or something like that for our engineering department or for Mark or or John? Um to be able to do their job and is that handled through I T or is that under their department licensing and you guys might provide some support if they go down or something?
Uh we do have some um, you know, help them manage their uh licensing for G S. For CAD, um you know, the installations and the uh the, you know, maintaining those systems. And hardware that they're installed on, but as far as uh any, you know, like Streakal or I'm not sure what other. Um engineering applications they might use, we, they they purchase it a one-off here and there and we install it for them. And and I hope they're where necessary, but most of, there's not a lot of that.
Okay.
Um wastewater treatment plant is probably the biggest user of what we would call proprietary. And it generally contracts the installation and maintenance um with that software.
I was just curious, on the three sixty-five, are you guys using the two-step verification?
Yes, we are. So you should have actually, you started using that just with the exchange online uh licensing, so. Uh you should have uh. gotten a a notice when you first set yours up uh to update your cellphone.
Uh you know what? Woody did call me and get a code. That's right.
There you go. At least you think it was Woody.
Well, it sure sounded like a. Yeah.
Hey, Bill, I just had a quick question on this one. Um are the four server licenses on-prem that we pay or are those uh in Azure?
Those are on-prem.
Okay, is there any um as part of like the five year plan, any movement you think towards posting on Azure versus on-prem?
Uh that's what I would like to see, yeah. Um of course, you know, I I think that uh. Um each person has their own thoughts about that, but uh. Um now, you with the availability to high speeds and dependable access to the internet. Uh through through access to that, to those uh resources, it's a lot more doable. You know, network, the internet goes down and it does, it can be a a big buzzkill.
Yeah.
Anything else on that uh topic? Let's go back to the agenda here. Hey, that brings us to the technology advisory group and um we kind of touched on that a little bit. Um. I I included uh um, let's see. The staff memo that kind of created the group. Um, this was something that um. That uh Doug and I uh developed and uh. We before this, it was ma- basically. Me dealing with individual departments on their specific um initiatives. And what we found is that by doing a routine approach like this, get a lot better feedback from people who are kind of. Forced to outside of the box because they don't work in that particular. Uh area and it's like, hey, if you look at it with a whole different set of eyes. And come up with some pretty good uh suggestions to help us uh find two things. That group meets quarterly and I. Um the last. Agenda from the last meeting we had, we don't have the agenda put together for. Yeah, and and March yet. But these are the the committee member, the the group members. Um. But I really give folks on there, a lot of great feedback. And and these are some of the uh the projects that uh the the group is is helps. Um kind of monitor and and share information. Sims uh cemetery management software, that's the one that's that's uh almost completed. And should be live by the end of this month. I work permit, I believe that was delayed and uh Michelle and and John are still working on that one with I Works folks. Electronic timesheet system, that one's been completed. It's everyone's for the. The department uses uh um that system, our department has their own. Um um system that they use, but it uh is in pretty well. And this council table processing system uh went live in January and we've all been using it. Camping campground reservation system went live in at the beginning of the year. And uh I I think feedback's been pretty good on that one. Have you guys received much feedback as council members?
Not yet.
I haven't heard you.
Uh there was something in the paper, I think it was today, saying that that system was up and running.
I used uh, no, that's fairly new, but I used the system last year or the other system. It seemed relatively, you know. I like it. I'll have to check out this one.
And I hear some other things that are on the on the agenda to the uh council uh chambers face the. Create which I I saved for the last item here, so I knew we'd get some good feedback for you guys for that. Now, I do want some 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 real solid uh non-policy. Now, I do want some, some, some real solid, uh, non-policy feedback. Uh, because you guys are the customers, you guys are the ones who use that. And, uh, we'll be there in just a minute. There's the, uh, Ben Warden password management system that would be is, uh, that leading. And, uh, um, we're going to be, uh, so. A pretty baby system in Skagit Coffee.
So Bill, I'd say a quick question on the, if you go up a little bit. Sure. All the, all the software that the different departments are kind of working on and purchasing and implementing. Do we have like a point of contact page on the inside that if somebody has a question about, say, like ClearGov? That they can go to Debbie for questions or do they come to you? Uh, what's kind of the policy behind that?
Um, I, I don't, there's a policy. But they are, um, the ones that are a software as a service, they do have a, a lead. And that's, that's listed here. And we just know to go to that person. If I have a question about, uh, oh, about I-Work, you know, I haven't been to Michelle. If I have a question about, uh, Sims. I'm, I'm actually going to go Serena, it's not listed here. Uh, but she's, she's, uh, as her deputy clerk is going to be the, the point of contact for that. Yeah, it's a, it's a great group. We're going to meet again, um, uh, in March, I believe on the seventeenth. And, um, hopefully I'll have some things to put, um, based on the, the outcomes of this meeting, I'll have some things to present them there.
Okay.
See, item ten. But, uh, let's see. That was the, uh, city, uh, website and social media. And just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of what our presence, our social media presence is. Each of, each of these accounts are, um, um, the policy is that they have to be, uh, pre-approved before they can, can get one. That, uh, policy that I generated, um, I believe that's one that Aaron. Uh, and I tried to find it, uh, before this meeting, but. But I'll find that policy if it's not, I know it needs to be updated. And I think it's probably something that needs to be part of the policy that Nikki and Charlie. So we've got our Facebook page, um, we've got our, the city LinkedIn page. We've got the YouTube channel, uh, that is only for posting our videos that are, are, uh, linked, uh, from our website. Uh, we've got, uh, the police department's, um, age and Instagram, uh, page as well. And that's pretty much it. And all of those things are archived through our smart shark typing platform. So our email, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, we don't have any Twitter accounts. I don't know that we will. It's because right now the administration really doesn't support Twitter. Um, offer products and, uh, text messaging is archived through this. It's, it's really handy. A tool for me and for, you know, finding information and for, uh, discovery for, uh, the string public records requests. Which we do through our GovQA, um, uh, application, uh, which is a soft service as well. You guys looked at, at the GovQA, uh, system. You know? That's basically our, our public records request system. Uh, go to our website and share that, Gary, just so you can see it. Hi. So this is our, our portal for, um, records requests. Can you see that on your end now?
Yes.
So the nice thing about this is that it catches people, um, before they make the request. Uh, in a couple of ways so they can find answers, uh, right away by clicking on here. It's, uh, for any of the previous, uh, requests that have been made that are, were, that found records and those documents were made public. And those are easily searchable. Downloaded. Um, and then they can go ahead and make a, a request. By clicking this and as they're typing in the information. Uh, for, we get a lot of public safety requests for, from the trees, from, from individuals involved in, um, like traffic, uh, incidents and stuff like that. And the, I mean, this court records, they've got their own special system. And the general ones here. Is where they entered their information here to create an account. And then when they start filling in their request as they're typing, um, the system, you know, looks for keywords and then requests. And, and, uh, will, uh, hey, maybe you're looking for this. What's really helpful? And, and, uh, change some of those, those potential requests into, um, you know, answers that the user has available.
Well, it's fantastic. That probably saves the staff a lot of time.
It does. And I, um, I do know that, um, on a regular basis, the, the, uh, police department, these records staff, they probably do about, I don't know, ten of those a day. Times more. They do a fantastic job.
Is there a way for you on like the admin side to see like reporting wise, like are we seeing an increase per year, decrease?
So that's, yeah, it's kind of great, uh, um, system for generating those reports.
Okay. Is that going to be helpful, like staffing too? If, you know, the police are getting really burdened by that, we would have a statistic to back it up saying, you know, this is, or it over six-month period, this is how many more we're getting.
Any other, uh, um, comments on the item number ten for city website and social media? Hey, let's move on to the last one. That's the council chambers, uh, yeah, upgrade. Yes, you know what? What I'm interested in finding out, uh, from you guys is like, you know, what's working well for you? Start with. I know that we've been in a Zoom-only or hybrid mode for so long, it might be hard to remember. Uh, what was working well, uh, when we were just meeting in person. But, um, we have used it in hybrid mode, uh, a few times. I know there are some, some items that don't work so well. Uh, but what are some things you like about the system?
I did like the opportunity for, um, you know, having that Zoom for people who didn't want to come in, not just having to have, I actually liked the hybrid. If people wanted to be at home and they don't want to come in, they have that ability. And then being able to have access to like, if people want to do presentations, such as the Friendship House or, you know, um, I know people who've asked to come in and talk about the river and salmon and, and the way that, you know, um, that run, it can be protected or things like that. And they might have a slideshow. So having that ability has been nice. Yeah, I think it gives that visual. I would almost suggest a bigger monitor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really liked the big screen. I thought that it'd be great if there was a monitor somewhere in the front to the side of the council. So that the people aren't doing this in their chairs to look at everything. Um, uh, the council doesn't really have much of a choice, uh, just because of the way the room's set up. But, um, yeah, that was the only thing that, uh, I think really caught my attention when I went in after you guys had done some changes was having a monitor screen. That is fantastic for presentations.
Yeah, Bill, I would second that too. Like when we did, went from the hybrid or went from just the in-person to the hybrid, being able to see people on Zoom on those screens was really nice. And I feel like it gives people that don't want to come that opportunity to still be seen and heard. I really like that option. Um, and when we're in the area, I can hear everyone really well. But I know like some people, and it might be the masks, I don't know, um, could have a hard time hearing us on Zoom. I don't know if that was. Part of the Zoom or if that was where that problem was.
That's part of it. Uh, part of it's the mask, part of it is, um, what the masks do to, um, the, the microphone's ability to pick up the, uh, voice. Um, so that will get better. But, you know, until then, you know, if we still, uh, up until next month anyway. Uh, if we still have to wear masks, uh, it's really important to bring them as close as possible and straight into it.
I do like Joe's idea of having a monitor near the front, um, just because I remember being in those seats and looking over. And it was like, you are doing this whole nother action. It was like everybody's hoop, you know? And then sitting on the side for a long video can be a little difficult. So, yeah.
Yeah, if we can, if we could have something that's kind of hanging down from the ceiling. Yeah. Somehow that's angled in such a way that it's viewable from, from out in the audience, but doesn't block the view of the people who are sitting up at the, um, the eyes, um, then I think we can do that. Um, I, I would like to look into not using a, a digital projector and actually using the real screen. Um, yeah. Protector, um, even with the really high lumen ones, uh, it's just real hard to see when the lights on. And I think that, uh, a standard LED, uh, display is going to make more sense. Just really come down. Even with the inflation that I've had recently. Now, whether we can get the kind of stuff to the timing, man, that's the difference. Um, the one other thing that I, you know, is talking about display is, uh, we'd like to get at each of your stations. Uh, where you sit, um, um, a display, a small display, maybe, you know? Which is something like that, where you can see what's being presented. Um, sometimes it's even hard to see upon the screen and even if it, uh, is on the side close to you. It was just nice to be, that's the nice thing about Zoom is when you're participating in the Zoom, uh, meeting, you can, um, you know, pinch the screen and, and blow that thing up, make it zoom in. Uh, it's a lot easier to, to see what the person on the other end is presenting. Um, so that in, in combination with a, some way to, uh, actually get a camera on each person who's speaking in the council. Um, that's another thing that I would like to do. Uh, microphone, we don't have to worry about that because if your microphone's on, it's a lot, but, um, there may be a way that we can set up. Even an automated way for it to tell who, who is speaking. And, and, uh, turn that, uh, change that, uh, camera, uh, to that person. Uh, or it might be something that's actually buttoned up. Where the user would have to pass the button to be heard and to be, um, have the camera displayed them. But I know AV guy and neither is Woody. So that's something that we would probably bring in some, some outside help and, and have them just give us some, some proposals on what we can do to, to kind of meet those needs. What about the video in the room? Do you feel like you all can hear what's going on? I know Brendan said that he said, uh, like, uh, you could hear what was coming in the room. But when people are speaking at the podium.
Yeah, I think for the, I can hear them pretty clearly.
That's a four-channel, uh, system in there. So, um, there's a separate channel for the staff microphones over on the side. A channel for, um, the mayor and all of you. A channel for the, um, either the, the citizen who's speaking or the, the, uh, defense attorney or, or prosecuting attorney. In the court system. So, and then the fourth channel is whatever's being displayed on the, um, being presented. So that it, you know, a little pop at one of those stations or, uh, for that non-mid system that we have. But what I'm hearing is the audio, we can probably leave as it is in focus on those videos. For phase three.
I, I think that would be my number one priority would be the video components.
Okay, we'll work on that. I know, uh, budget constraints this year are going to be, um, uh, uh, pretty tight. Um, but it won't hurt to at least get the information and have it, uh, make decisions if we don't have the information.
I agree. You said there was a, he up in the, uh, conference room as well that would need to be looked at?
Yeah, and that's going to be a different setup. That'll be more, that's a little easier to do because it's such a small room. Doing, um, something similar to, uh, an owl setup. I don't know if you're familiar with those.
I was just going to recommend.
They'll wake up and look right at you.
It's kind of creepy.
They do look pretty funny. Bill, uh, do we see a lot of people watching our, the YouTube after the fact? Like, I know we, we post them on YouTube, the whole video. Do we see a lot of people actually watching those or is it pretty minimal?
It's, it can be pretty high. Yeah, there's, uh, um, uh, especially if there, there's something like, uh, you know, a controversy that's, that's occurring, uh, very, uh, um, a project, was it really big? Well, that was probably, um, you know, a lot of pitchforks and, and forches too. But, um, but a lot of. but, but a lot of people watch that. The recordings for those meetings. I can get you some, some on that too, if you're, if you're interested.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, especially when we go back to in-person. Because I think it'd be nice, like on Zoom, your face is immediately like the big screen for everybody. But I think when we're all in person, I think the cameras are pretty zoomed out, right? So you can see those people, but it would be nice that when somebody's talking that the feed would show the person's face and talking.
Yeah. I watched a, a lot of those coming up to be to the election, right? Yeah. Yeah, they're helpful. And even, I even watched the one today that was posted for the finance Brendan that you had. So, yeah, it's just helpful for general information, the planning commission on, on Tuesday. And that's just, you know, it's just helpful to, to, to have those. So the Zoom does have that advantage because when people are talking, it's like boom, boom. And it's a lot more, yeah, than the older ones. The older ones are a little
I'll be honest, when I watch them, I'm only listening to them because I'll put in headphones at work and I'll set it to play and set my cell phone down. But the audio quality, quality's been a lot better since you guys upgraded the system a bit. Because I noticed when I went back and referenced an older meeting from a couple of years ago, there was a noticeable difference in quality of audio.
Ooh, you should have looked at the video. It was really bad.
Oh, no. Yeah, they, they were terrible on the little cell phone because I would look at it when I first get it started. It looked like someone was using their home webcam from 1999. Like it was, it was definitely low quality.
There, there was a limitation with the, one of the pieces of equipment in the rack that we couldn't, we couldn't do any higher definition than like, I think it was 480. Something like that. I don't remember what the resolution was, but it was really low. And so, yeah, this, this Pro Two system we have is a, is a big improvement. We even had the, the, the PUD come by and take over our system. They're building a new conference room in their, in the new facility. And they're looking at different options, you know, they have another place to, but, but that benefits of the Pro Two system. It's easy just for anybody who's not an AV person to manage. That's the nice thing about it.
Yeah. That's good.
Any other items, any, any other comments about the council AV upgrade?
I think that's all I have. Nice work on the, getting it upgraded.
I think the last item we've got is kind of determine the, the date for the next meeting. You guys want to try to get together after the the next technology meeting? So that, that's towards the late, middle to late March. So we could maybe meet in, in April sometime. I'll look at the calendar and kind of just reach out to each of you to find a good date and time. Does 5:30 on a Thursday seem like a good time?
Yeah, that works for me.
Yeah, works for me.
Yeah, I can make it work. I might be a little late, but I can make it work.
It's my one night a week to eat out and I go to our local Thai restaurant in the corner. So they're probably waiting on me down there right now.
Stay open until you get there.
I hope if, if there's nothing else, let's go ahead and adjourn. And I sure appreciate you guys. This is, this has been a long time coming.
Thank you too, Bill, for what you do.
All right, thank you all.
Well, guys.